Amen. Lord, we praise you and thank you because you have done such a marvelous work, Lord.
Amen.
Thank you, Lord, that you really accomplished and fulfilled the whole law and the prophets.
Amen.
Oh, Lord, how you are the word of God. You are the fulfillment and the embodiment of the word.
Amen.
Thank you, Lord, that all the righteous requirements of the law are fulfilled in you, Lord.
Amen.
And we have been put into Christ, and Christ is in us.
Amen.
And, Lord, even though we had no part in the, in the promise, in the promise to Abraham, but now through Christ we do, Lord.
Amen.
Thank you, Lord, that you desired for all this time, that all the people, everybody would be part of your kingdom, Lord.
Amen.
And, Lord, thank you for opening this way for us.
Amen.
And, Lord, we pray that, that you open our eyes, that we will not go back to the old ways, Lord.
Amen.
But we will continue on in the new.
Amen.
Amen.
Now, Lord, you fulfill all the righteous requirements of the law.
Amen.
Amen.
Amen. When we walk in the spirit, we also can fulfill all the righteous requirements.
Amen, Lord.
Thank you, Lord, you are the minister of this new covenant.
Amen.
Oh, Lord, it's no longer of the outward, Lord.
Amen.
Amen, but it's an inward, Lord.
Amen.
Yeah, we do pray for your word again this small afternoon.
Amen.
Amen.
Oh, Lord, may you write this new covenant, Lord.
Amen.
May it flow into our hearts.
Yes, amen.
Amen, that we can be obedient to you.
Amen.
Amen. Lord, thank you. We thank you for the precious balance of the new covenant. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Amen. Praise the Lord, and it's really wonderful that we can take this time to spend time together in fellowship and in the word, and pray that each one of us would really go to the Lord with the word to, for him to reveal to us in the spirit. And I know this is a lot to go through, but it's very important. And, you know, it's good to be used to coming to the word, spending time in the word, because there are so many riches in the word that we should learn to all dig out, right? The Bible is like a, it's a treasure. It's a book full of treasures for us, and we should learn to dig out the treasures. So, um, this weekend, as you know, we're talking about how, what we spoke last night about what the Old Covenant was, and the laws that are contained in the Old Covenant. And we didn't go through all the laws, but you can see that there are many, many laws. And it's very important to note that this, that all the, this covenant was made with the people of Israel. It's not made with us. And also, it was, one second. They are bound to follow the, the rules of the law, because it's a covenant. It's an agreement. It is an agreement between the, the people of Israel and with God. It's a contract. Okay? And the contract must be kept by both parties. And God made it very certain by entering into an agreement with the people of Israel. It is even more firm and secure than a promise, right? If I promised you something, that's pretty good. But the Lord went even further and made a covenant, which is a signed, it's, it is a binding agreement with his people. And we saw that even though the people of Israel continually, many, many times, kept breaking the contract, God still would not abandon them. He would punish them. They went through a lot of punishment for sure, but even till today, he still honors the agreement with them. And the thing is that we Gentiles, we who are not physically by blood descended from Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob, we actually have no part in this covenant. We have no part. You know, we have no, you know, God was going to give a promise to them. He's going to give them all this land and so many things, and to be, to be qualified to be the people of God, actually, we have no right to be part of that, you know? So this is really wonderful, to see what, that the Lord has brought us, brought about a new covenant, and we're going to look at what that means. But first, let's look at, let's read some verses together. And like I said yesterday, there will be a lot of verse reading this weekend, which is very good. So I know it's afternoon. This is time when some people get really tired, but try to stay focused, okay? All right, starting from Matthew, chapter 5, verse 17. And I'll, I'll speak about this as we, as we read, okay? Let's read it carefully, and remember, everybody, follow along in the Bible. Don't just listen, get into the practice of following along while we're reading, okay? "Do not think that I came to destroy the law or the prophets. I did not come to destroy, but to fulfill." Okay, stop there. This is a very important statement that the Lord made. Many times, there are some people who think that because of the Lord Jesus' coming, because of the New Covenant, we can completely ignore the Old Testament. That is also not true. It's still the word of God. But here, he says here, "I did not come to destroy the law or the prophets." It's not to eliminate it. It doesn't mean that what they say doesn't matter anymore. But what he did come to do is to fulfill. And fulfill has two meanings. One of the meanings is that it is to complete something that was not complete. So you'll see that a lot of the law was actually written with, it was given partially. So the Lord came to give the true meaning of it, the full picture. So he came to, not just to extend it, but it was like, you know, like he, when the, when Moses gave the law, it was only partial, but he came to give the entire thing, to complete it, right? The fulfillment of it. And I'll, I'll explain what I mean by that soon. The other part of fulfill is to accomplish. So he came to accomplish it as well, because actually, he is the only person who could accomplish the whole righteous requirements of the law. Like we said yesterday, nobody is able to fully keep the law. Nobody. It's impossible, because we are, the, the demand of the law on us is so great. The demands are very high. It's that it's impossible for us. We will just keep failing, okay? So, um, so, right, so fulfill, like I wrote here, it means to complete what was lacking, but also to perform and to accomplish. And we have to see here, okay, so let's continue on. Verse 18. "For surely I say to you, 'Till heaven and earth pass away, one jot or one tittle will by no means pass from the law till all is fulfilled. Whoever therefore breaks one of the least of these commandments and teaches men so shall be called least in the kingdom of heaven; but whoever does and teaches them shall be called great in the kingdom of heaven.'" Okay, so, so this is now talking about, this is not talking about initial salvation anymore. This is talking about the kingdom of heaven, which is the millennial kingdom. So in order to, you know, for salvation, for initial salvation, all we have to do is believe. It's just faith. But here, in order to enter the kingdom, it goes further. You have to, you cannot break the word. You have to live according to the word, and even to teach others the same thing, right? So this is important, right? To be called great in the kingdom of heaven. So this is not just about salvation. It's talking about our position in the kingdom, in the future kingdom. Verse 20. "For I say to you, that unless your righteousness exceeds the righteousness of the scribes and Pharisees, you will by no means enter the kingdom of heaven." Okay, again, so this is not talking about, now it's become very clear. This is not talking about initial salvation, because remember, to be saved from eternal condemnation, from hell, from the lake of fire, to receive the new life, you need to simply believe, right? To believe in your heart, to call with your mouth the Lord, and you will be saved, right? To believe and be baptized, to be saved. This is not talking about that. This is talking about something even further. This is about entering the kingdom of heaven. And the kingdom of heaven, like we spoke about a while ago, is not heaven. It's the kingdom that originates from the heavens. It's the heavenly kingdom. It's not an earthly kingdom. And that kingdom, which is heavenly, is the millennial kingdom that Christ will one day bring back, bring down to establish on the earth when he comes back. That is the millennial kingdom, and it's a reward that's only given to those who are faithful. Okay, so it says here, "The way to, to enter the kingdom, the millennial kingdom, is that your righteousness must exceed that of the Pharisees and the scribes." What does that mean? Do you know what the righteousness of the Pharisees and scribes are? Who were the Pharisees and scribes?
Teachers.
They're teachers, yeah? They're, they're people who followed the Jewish law very diligently. Like they were very, they, they were very, very devoted to following the law, the law of Moses, and they were very zealous for it. Okay? Very zealous for it. You had to keep, and, and they put a lot of demands and requirements on people. You must follow the law. And they also followed the law, and, you know, and that to many people is very righteous, right? It's, if you look at the Pharisees, you would say, oh, he's such a holy person, so righteous. Look, he keeps the Sabbath. He goes, does this, he gives tithes, he does the, you know, the kosher, everything, and he's dressed in a certain way, and, you know, he keeps all the sacrifices, and, oh, he's such a holy person, right? He follows the law. He studies the law. He knows everything about the law, very holy. But he said, "Your righteousness has to exceed this. There has to be even more than this." That means that the righteousness of the Pharisees and the scribes is not good, not good enough. Theirs is a very holy appearance, but he says yours has to be even more than that. That tells you that if we are like the scribes and the Pharisees, in a very outward keeping of the law, you will not enter the kingdom. You will not. So it tells us that the, the outward keeping of the law, which the scribes and the Pharisees do, is not enough. And outward holiness is actually useless, because we will see to, later today, in Matthew 23, how the Lord condemned, how he really rebuked the scribes and the Pharisees, because he called them, many times throughout the, the, um, the Gospels, he called them hypocrites. You are fake. You're phonies. You are whitewashed tombs. You look clean on the outside, so holy appearance, but inside you are full of dead men's bones. It's terrible, right? So outward, in the kingdom of God, outward holiness, outward appearance is useless. Doing things for people to see, that's what the Pharisees do. They did a lot of things, good spiritual things for people to see. "Look at how holy I am. Look how good I am." And they put the burden on other people too. You better do it too. Okay? So this is very important. Our righteousness has to exceed that. It already seems hard, actually, you know, to live up to the standard of the Pharisees. It's actually not easy, but he, he turns up the, the dial, right? Must be even more. Well, that sounds really hard, doesn't it? So, verse 21. "You have heard that it was said to those of old, 'You shall not murder; and whoever murders will be in danger of the judgment.'" Okay, so this, this is true, right? You remember, this is, now, see, he starts to go into specific laws, okay? So he goes, this is a, this is one of the laws, one of the commandments. "You shall not murder." Okay? And like I said yesterday, this is actually not that hard to do. But like he said, he came to fulfill the law. He made, he came to complete what was incomplete. So this law, he's trying to show us, is actually incomplete. It's not that he's raising the standard. The standard was never lowered. It's just that the law given, you'll see throughout the examples today, is that, that God actually simplified things. He compromised on the law because of the weakness of the people, and because of certain situations they were living in at the time. But Jesus came to show that the real requirement, the true requirement of the law, is what he explains. So he came to fulfill, to complete what was actually incomplete. So this law, "You shall not murder," is actually incomplete, and he explains what it means. Verse 22. "But I say to you, that whoever is angry with his brother without a cause shall be in danger of the judgment; and whoever says to his brother Raka shall be in danger of the counsel; but whoever says, 'You fool,' shall be in danger of hellfire." Okay? So what is the, so if I did not, let's say I didn't murder anybody, and I didn't, I never murdered anybody, but in my heart, or even with my mouth, I said, "Oh, you fool. You're so foolish," right? Or in my heart, I, I was angry with somebody. I, I detest somebody. Oh, I can't stand this person. So did I break the commandment? I broke it. Even though I did not actually murder somebody, but he tells us, the real principle, this is what we have to understand. The commandments have a principle behind it. And the real, the principle here for, behind "do not murder" is this hatred towards another person. It's not the act itself. It's not the outward. So he, again, he shows us, now, in, under Christ, it's no longer about the outward anymore. It's now about the inward. It's about the, what matters is the condition of the heart. So the true standard of the Lord, right from the beginning, was always the matter of the heart. It's not about the action, or whether you do it or not. The concern is the inward, okay? So he's, even to call someone, "You fool." You think about, why did I call that person, "You fool"? Why do you call people, "You stupid person"? Why do you think, why do you say that? It's because you think you're so good. You think you're right. And for someone you call stupid, do you love that person? Probably not. You must really think badly of that person. Right? I wouldn't be so stupid like that person, right? There's so many, there, there are many explanations, but inside our heart, there is a problem. And that's what the Lord is trying to show, that the commandment is trying to indicate something with that, with the heart. Okay, so 23. "Therefore, if you bring your gift to the altar, and there remember that your brother has something against you, leave your gift there before the altar and go your way. First be reconciled to your brother, and then come and offer your gift." So the offering of the gift is, is lawful, right? It's the commandment of the Lord. He said, "You have to bring your, your gift, your offering to the Lord at the altar." You're keeping the commandment, but the Lord doesn't want that gift if something is wrong in your heart. So he tells you, just the empty outward bringing of the gifts, keeping of the commandments, God doesn't really care about the gift. He cares about your heart, the outward keeping of the commandment. Verse 14. "You are the light of the world; a city that is set on a hill cannot be hidden; nor do they light a lamp and put it under a basket, but under a lampstand, and it gives light to all who are in the..." Oh, sorry, sorry. What am I reading? I skipped that part, okay? Okay, verse 25, sorry. "Agree with your adversary quickly while you are on the way with him, lest your adversary deliver you to the judge; the judge hand you over to the officer, and you be thrown into prison. Assurely I say to you, you will by no means get out of there till you have paid every last penny. You have heard that it was said to those of old, 'You shall not commit adultery;' but I say to you, that whoever looks at a woman to lust for her, has already committed adultery with her in his heart. If your right eye causes you to sin, pluck it out and cast it from you; for it is more profitable for you that one of your members perish than for your whole body to be cast into hell. And if your right hand causes you to sin, cut it off and cast it from you; for it is more profitable for you than one of your members perish than for your whole body to be cast into hell." Here he gives another example of another commandment. Right? Again, this is a matter of the heart, what your eye looks at, right? What is in your heart? And he even goes further, says, "Don't give any opportunities." Don't, he doesn't mean literally pull your eye out. He says, "Don't walk into situations. If there is something in your life that causes you to commit this sin, get rid of it. Don't give yourself opportunity to sin." Okay? Uh, 31. "Furthermore, it has been said, whoever divorces his wife, let him give her a certificate of divorce. But I say to you, that whoever divorces his wife for any reason except sexual immorality causes her to commit adultery; and whoever marries a woman who is divorced commits adultery." So this, this is now showing, he's showing that this law about divorcing, that was given by Moses, was actually incomplete. And he shows that the original intention of God is that nobody is divorced, except for sexual immorality, because marriage is very important in the Lord's eyes, right? In the Moses time, you could just, if you don't like your wife anymore, you just give her a certificate, goodbye, right? Goodbye. But he said that actually, that is written, and we'll see later in Mark, that was written for your weakness, but the intent was never that way. Okay? Verse 33. "Again you have heard that it was said to those of old, 'You shall not swear falsely; you shall perform your oaths to the Lord; but I say to you, do not swear at all, neither by heaven, for it is God's throne, nor by the earth, for it is His footstool, nor by Jerusalem, for it is the city of the great king; nor shall you swear by your head, because you cannot make one hair white or black; but let your yes be yes, and your no, no; for whatever is more than these is from the evil one." Amen. Yeah, and these, again, he's showing here that the, in the Old Covenant, they, there was a law that permitted you to swear oaths, but you should not swear falsely, but he's saying that you should not even do that, actually. Better to just say yes or no and keep your word, because if you swear an oath, it is a, God will hold you to that, because you cannot change anything that you swear by, right? So better not to swear. So again, this was a commandment that was given that was incomplete, that he shows that he will complete. Verse 38. "You have heard that it was said, 'An eye for an eye, and a tooth for a tooth; but I tell you not to resist an evil person; but whoever slaps you on the right cheek, turn the other to him also. If anyone wants to sue you and take away your tunic, let him have your cloak also; and whoever compels you to go one mile, go with him too. Give to him who asks you, and from him who wants to borrow from you, do not turn away.'" Here's another law that we talked about last night, the eye for an eye and the tooth for a tooth. Does that mean that this law is wrong? No, because this talks about how God's dealing is, his sense, God's righteousness is. If there is something that is done wrongly, somebody sins against us, then the, what God will normally do is to carry out a punishment. Everything that God, because God is a righteous judge, his judgments, if something is wrong, he will not leave it unpunished, right? This is how the Lord is, but that is not for us to carry out, actually. So when Jesus came, he indicates that the way to deal with evil people is actually to even let them slap you on the left, the other side too, not to take revenge for yourself. So in the past, people would take revenge. They would be their own judge. But here, in the New Covenant, the Lord is showing that we need to allow the Lord to judge, and we have to lower ourselves, right? Allow, don't take revenge, allow the Lord to judge. So this is another example of a law being extended, not extended, but made complete. Okay? And verse 33, 43. "You have heard that it was said, 'You shall love your neighbor and hate your enemy;' but I say to you, love your enemies, bless those who curse you; do good to those who hate you, and pray for those who spitefully use you and persecute you, that you may be sons of your Father in heaven; for he makes his son rise on the evil and on the good, and sends rain on the just and on the unjust. For if you love those who love you, what reward have you? Do not even the tax collectors do the same. And if you greet your brethren only, what do you do more than others? Do not even the tax collectors do so. Therefore you shall be perfect, just as your Father in heaven is perfect." So here you can see, the Lord shows us what the real standard is. What is the true standard of the Lord? It's to be perfect, as the heavenly Father is perfect, which makes sense, right? Because if we are sons of the living God, how can our Father be perfect, but his children not be perfect? And remember, the law was given, there were compromises made when the law was originally given, because of the weakness of the people. And I'll, I'll show you an example of that. And so when Jesus came, because he is bringing us into the New Covenant, where he is the one who's going to accomplish all the righteous requirements, he reveals what the true righteous requirements are, what the actual standard is, which is perfection. And he'll eventually, at this point in time, he had not instituted the New Covenant yet, but when he does, it'll, he'll also make it possible for us to achieve it. So first, he shows us the standard, and then later, he will give us the means to actually achieve it, right? But, but he had to tell people, this is what was actually, what the meaning of the law is, okay? So one of the examples is, um, that I wanted to look at, was this matter of Sabbath, okay? Somehow, this is very contentious with Christians. I don't know why. Well, I know why, but, okay, let's look at Matthew, chapter 12, verses 1 to 14. Matthew, chapter 12, verses 1 to 14. Oh, we're running out of time. Okay. Okay, I'll read this quickly. "At that time Jesus went through the grain fields on the Sabbath, and his disciples were hungry, and began to pluck heads of grain and to eat. And when the Pharisees saw it, they said to him, 'Look, your disciples are doing what is not lawful to do on the Sabbath.'" Remember, what is the Sabbath? You're not allowed to do any work. Every seventh day, you're supposed to not do any work. So this is work. They're pulling grains off of the, off of the wheat plant, okay? That's work. Verse 3. "And he said to them, 'Have you not read what David did when he was hungry, he and those who were with him?'" He and those who were with him, how he entered the house of God and ate the showbread, which was not lawful for him to eat, nor for those who were with him, but only for the priests? Or have you not read in the law that on the Sabbath, the priests in the temple profane the Sabbath and are blameless? Yet I say to you that in this place, there is one greater than the temple. But if you had known what this means, I desire mercy and not sacrifice, you would not have condemned the guiltless, for the son of man is lord of the Sabbath. Now, when he had departed from there, he went into their synagogue, and behold, there was a man who had a withered hand. And they asked him, saying, is it lawful to heal on the Sabbath, that they might accuse him? Then he said to them, what man is there among you who has one sheep? And if it falls into a pit on the Sabbath, will not lay hold of it and lift it out? Of how much more value then is a man than a sheep? Therefore, it is lawful to do good on the Sabbath. And he healed the man. So the, what is the problem here? The problem is that the Jews, they were focused on the letter of the law, that they missed the point of the Sabbath, they did not understand the meaning of the Sabbath. They were just fixated on the letter. Imagine that, something, you have an opportunity to help somebody, but unfortunately, it's a Sabbath. So does that make any sense? It doesn't even make any sense, right? But these people are so blinded by the letter of the law, that they can't even, they just don't see it, right? And the Lord is even saying, I am the Lord of the Sabbath. What does the Sabbath actually represent? Right, it is a day of rest, but actually, the day of rest, I'll tell you something. You know, when the Lord died, the, when the Lord was on the cross, he was, remember what it said, that they had to take down his body, why? Because of the Sabbath. So, and when the Lord was in the tomb, what day was it? What day was that day while he was in the tomb? Everybody knows, right? Good Friday is the day that he died on the cross, right? Friday, so the day that he was in the tomb was what? Saturday, it was the Sabbath. The Lord Jesus, actually, he himself was the fulfillment of the Sabbath. The Sabbath is actually to represent, is to symbolize that, that the Lord would be in the tomb at rest. He is the fulfillment of the Sabbath. It's not just, and here in Mark, chapter two, let's look at another one. It's not a coincidence that the Lord was dead in the tomb on the Sabbath, because he's the fulfillment of the Sabbath. Just like he was the fulfillment of the Passover lamb. So here, he was the one, he is the Lord of the Sabbath, he could do whatever he wanted on the Sabbath. It's, the day is actually all about him. Chapter two, verse twenty-seven. This is another, they were disputing with him about the Sabbath again. Chapter two, verse twenty-seven. And he said to them, the Sabbath was made for man and not man for the Sabbath. Therefore, the son of man is also lord of the Sabbath. What does it mean, the Sabbath was made for man? Not man for the Sabbath? It means that the Sabbath is not a day that you're not suppo, it wasn't, the intention was not for you to reorganize your life to, just to keep the Sabbath. He told us that the Sabbath was created so that the people of God in the, during the Old Testament times would actually get a day to rest. It was made for them. Right, it was made for their benefit, otherwise, they would work all day. There would not be any time to rest, there would not be any time to come to the Lord. It's not for man to serve the Sabbath, but it's actually Sabbath was created to help man, actually to benefit them physically, because they physically needed to rest. Right? Does that make sense? That's what it means here. So, so for people to, just even Christians, to just religiously keep this day means that they don't understand what this is about. They really don't understand. That the true meaning of this, right? If you just see how the Lord kept it, he didn't stop all his work, he worked every day, even in the New Testament. The apostles, they were working every day for the Lord, but they were doing it at rest, right? Their hearts were at rest in the Lord, the Christ was in them, they were in the Lord. Even when they were being persecuted, they were still in the Sabbath rest, right? And the Sabbath also represents when the Lord will complete all his work on the earth, when the millennial kingdom is, comes down. That's why Hebrews talks about that you shall not enter my rest. He's talking about the completion of all God's work. So it has different meanings like that, it's not for people to religiously keep. Okay, uh, on the Sabbath day, I can't do anything, I better just sit there. That's all I can do. Right, even today, the Jews, there are some elevators, they have Sabbath mode. You don't need to even press a button, you, it just stops at every floor. And then, you know, when it gets to your floor, you just come out, because pressing elevator buttons is work. And they have, now ovens, they have Sabbath mode, I don't even know what that is, but I guess you don't have to turn on the oven, I don't know what it is. Right, but it's just gone to such an extreme, it's just an outward keeping of it, but it doesn't actually benefit anybody. Same with this part about, um, about foods as well, right? In Matthew, chapter fifteen, he talks about it as well. In Matthew, chapter fifteen, verse eleven to twenty. Washing and, and things that go in. He says here in Matthew, chapter fifteen, verse eleven. Not what goes into the mouth defiles a man, but what comes out of the mouth, this defiles a man. Then his disciples came and said to him, do you not know that the Pharisees were offended when they heard this saying? But he answered and said, every plant which my heavenly Father has not planted will be uprooted. Let them alone, they are blind leaders of the blind, and if the blind leads the blind, both will fall into the ditch. Then Peter answered and said to him, explain this parable to us. So Jesus said, are you still, still without understanding? Do you not yet understand that whatever enters the mouth goes into the stomach and is eliminated? But those things which proceed out of the mouth come from the heart, and they defile a man. For out of the heart proceed evil thoughts, murders, adultery, fornications, thefts, false witness, blasphemies. These are the things which defile a man, but to eat with unwashed hands does not defile a man. So, yes, he's talking about washing or not washing, but that, what he says here, what enters is not what defiles. And isn't that true? Whatever you eat, it just goes out, right? You eat, it goes out. That's all it does, but it doesn't affect your relationship with God, it doesn't affect your heart. But the real problem, and this is where, where all of what the Lord is teaching is showing us, the outward is actually not important, what matters is the inward, that is what God really cares about. Just like what we said about the murders. Maybe you didn't murder, so you, you may say, well, I'm, I'm pretty good, I never murdered, but you called someone, you fool, you stupid, you thought it in your heart, so what's worse? You actually did it, you broke it. So today, under the Old Covenant, if I didn't, if I kept those laws, I'm okay. But God is showing us that the real, the true standard of the law is actually the heart. And that's why, even as you read throughout the Old Testament, you'll see that he starts, he starts to talk about the heart more and more. What was, so why did God love David so much? Was it because he was so good at keeping the laws? No, the, the Lord even mentioned, he went into the temple and stole the showbread and ate it, he's not even a priest. He broke the law even. Why did David, God loved David so much? Because he's a man after my own heart, he loved what God loved. He was so zealous for God in his heart. So already, David understood, even though he was in the Old Covenant, he understood that God's real standard is the heart. So it's not like that didn't exist until Jesus came. The matter of the heart didn't exist until Jesus said this in Matthew, no. It was already there, it, but some people, they realized it. David realized it. Right, many of the, many of the people, even many of the people mentioned in, uh, uh, Hebrews eleven, they realized it, that God actually cares about the heart, not the outward things. But now, Jesus is saying it out. He's spelling it out clearly, that the, the matter is really about the heart. This is what God will judge us on, you know, um, Mark, chapter ten, this matter of divorce. This is very interesting. So the, the Pharisees are trying to challenge him on the law. Mark, chapter ten, starting from verse one. Then he arose from there and came to the region of Judea by the other side of the Jordan. And multitudes gathered to him again, and as he was accustomed, he taught them again. That is, the Pharisees came and asked him, is it lawful for a man to divorce his wife, testing him? See, the Pharisees are really not very nice people, they're not really there to listen to him, they're there just to test him, to try to trap him. Verse seven, then they brought the coat, oh, sorry, I wouldn't like to read this, my, my page is stuck. Verse three, then he answered and said to them, what did Moses command you? They said, Moses permitted a man to write a certificate of divorce and to dismiss her. So, hold on, so according to that, it's lawful, it's lawful, right? If I, if I, somehow I don't get along with my wife, I can just, I can get any piece of paper, I write goodbye? You know? Goodbye, you're gone. You're gone, right? It's very simple. Just write a certificate of divorce, it's so easy. Okay? And Jesus answered and said to them, because of the hardness of your heart, he wrote this precept. So this tells us that there are laws that were written because of the weakness of the people. So the law actually itself was not complete, okay? But from the beginning of creation, God made them male and female. For this reason, a man shall leave his father and mother and be joined to his wife, and the two shall become one flesh, and then they are no longer two but one flesh. Therefore, what God has joined together, let man not separate. Okay? Um, and so on, and so on. So you can see here that the Lord did not raise the standard of the law. He said, from the beginning, from Adam and Eve's time. He didn't raise the standard, the standard was already there. He just showed them that the law was written in that way for their weakness. But he came to show them the true standard of the law, which is actually, it seems even harder for us, right? It is actually a lot harder. Okay? There's another verse here in Mark, chapter nineteen. I like these verses. Matthew, Matthew nineteen, Matthew nineteen. I think it's almost time for a break. Matthew nineteen, verse sixteen to twenty-two, let's read it together. Now behold, one came and said to him, good teacher, what thing shall I do that I may have eternal life? So he said to him, why do you call me good? No one is good but one, that is God. But if you want to enter into life, keep the commandments. He said to him, which ones? Jesus said, you shall not murder, you shall not commit adultery, you shall not steal, you shall not bear false witness, honor your father and mother, and you shall love your neighbor as yourself. The young man said to him, all these things I have kept from my youth, what still lack? Jesus said to him, if you want to be perfect, go sell what you have and give to the poor, and you will have treasure in heaven and come follow me. But when the young man heard that saying, he went away sorrowful, for he had great possessions. Very interesting. It says here, the young man, in verse sixteen, he asked the Lord, what do I, what shall I do to have eternal life? Okay? And Jesus said in verse seventeen, the last sentence, if you want to enter into life, keep the commandments. Okay, and he said, yeah, I kept the commandments. But now, a step further, it's not enough to enter into life. He said, if you want to be perfect, if you want to be perfect, what do you want? Do you just want to enter into life? Or do you want to be perfect? Remember what the Lord said, you shall be perfect, as your father in heaven is perfect. So that's why it's not enough just to keep the commandments, and the young man, he kept the commandments, so he, you know, he was do, he was doing pretty well. I have kept all these from my youth, but he knew he was lacking something, he knew it's not enough. That's why he asked, what do I still lack? And it's very good. We may, sometimes when we think of the young man, we think, oh, this guy, poor guy, you know? But actually, he had a good sense, he sensed that he was lacking something, something was still missing. He knew following the commandments was not enough. And the Lord pointed out what was still missing in his heart. Again, it's the heart, it's not the keeping of the commandments anymore. Jesus said, because he knew he was a rich man, if you want to be perfect, okay? Perfect, go and sell what you have and give to the poor, and you will have treasure in heaven and come follow me. So this goes beyond the, the law and the commandments. Right? So what do we want? So why are we so fixated on following the law only? We should be diligent about following him, he said, to follow me. Drop all the things that are holding your heart down. Your heart, this person, your heart is being captured by money. You have to first let go of that thing that's capturing you and then follow me. That's what you need. I don't care about just the commandments, because you still have this problem in your heart. So he shows us that it's not enough to just keep things, do things outwardly. The Lord came to show that the real issue is the heart, okay? So this is a very interesting portion, right? Entering into life, which we want, but even more, we want to be perfect, it's much more important. And the last point before we, um, ended for this, for now, is this matter of the, I really want, hope that we can all really appreciate the wine of the Lord's table. It is not just to cleanse us from sin, and we'll look at this, okay? Matthew twenty-six, verse, uh, twenty-seven and twenty-eight. Then he took the cup, okay, Matthew twenty-six, twenty-seven and twenty-eight. Then he took the cup and gave thanks and gave it to them, saying, drink from it, all of you, for this is the blood of the new covenant, which is shed for many for the remission of sins, okay? This is my blood of the new covenant, which is shed for many for the remission of sins. Mark fourteen. Verse thirty-four. Oh, no. Is that the wrong one? I think that's the I think that's the wrong verse. Oh, well, that's okay. Luke twenty-two. The next one. Verse twenty. He says it here. "Likewise he also took the cup after supper, saying, 'This cup is the new covenant in my blood, which is shed for you.'" Okay, let's take a look at Hebrews, chapter nine. Verse eighteen to twenty-two. Chapter nine, verse eighteen to twenty-two. "Therefore not even the first covenant was dedicated without blood; for when Moses had spoken every precept to all the people according to the law, he took the blood of calves and goats, with water, scarlet wool, and hyssop, and sprinkled both the book itself and all the people, saying, 'This is the blood of the covenant, which God has commanded you.' Then likewise he sprinkled with blood both the tabernacle and all the vessels of the ministry; and according to the law almost all things are purified with blood; and without the shedding of blood there is no remission." Yeah, so the blood, even in the first, remember in the, we talked about this last night, with the covenant with Abraham, there was the shedding of blood. The animals, they brought the animals, they cut them in two. And God, as the flame of fire passed through them, there was a shedding of blood. In the, in Exodus, chapter twenty-four, when the people agreed to the covenant that God was making with them, Moses shed the blood of the animals and sprinkled it on the people. And the blood represents what? It was to, it was to confirm the covenant, the agreement. It's to bind the agreement between God and the people. It's like the signature, when you go into, if you're gonna, let's say you're gonna buy a car, or you're gonna buy a house, they give you a contract, or you're going to, you find a job. What do you do? You sign your name on it. It has all the terms of the agreement. When you come, agree to the job, you come in at this time, you're gonna do these things, you get paid this much, and blah, 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 and then you sign your name on it, right? The other side signs their name too. And that is what the shedding of the blood is. It's to sign the agreement, that now this is, this covenant, this agreement is established. Now, in the new covenant, whose blood was shed? It's actually Jesus Christ. His blood was the blood that was shed, to sign the agreement. And this blood is perfect. It's more than any bull or goat. It is a per, it shows that this covenant, that God is signing with us, is now a perfect covenant, because it was shed by perfect blood. And he says, "It's for the remission of sins," because you cannot enter into this agreement with sin. The sin has to be dealt with and eliminated first, before you can be part of this agreement. So the first thing he had to do was to shed the blood for the remission of sins, and so that you can, that, so that this agreement could be signed, because it is something perfect and holy. There cannot be any sin in it, in this new covenant, right? So, that is, that is why. So when we have the, the wine at the Lord's table, we, well, with the bread, we appreciate that the Lord broke his body for us, right? He is the real bread from heaven. And the wine is, we have to remember that he brought us into the new covenant, into this agreement with God, this perfect agreement. And we'll get, and today, we actually haven't gone into the details of the new covenant yet. We talked about how the Lord came to fulfill the law, but you'll see that tonight, how special, amazing this new covenant is, right? So we'll talk about that. But that is what this blood, the shedding of the blood represents, right? The signing, the confirmation of the new covenant with us. Okay? So it is a, it's not a small thing. It is a very, it is, without the new covenant, we would have no life, we would have no chance at all. It's extremely important, right? And it is, it, it's a, signifies the faithfulness and the sureness, how we can be fully confident that God will keep his agreement, right? So we Christians should never have any doubt of the Lord and his power and what he can do in us, because of this blood that shows, confirms. It's even more sure than a promise. Okay? So with that, I guess we can take a break, and then, uh, we can, maybe we can just have some fellowship, if anybody wants to share anything or to ask questions, um, then we can do that.